Okay, then. Let's stand for the Pledge of Ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin the meeting with a moment of silence and, as we do, I hope you keep in your mind and in your heart Mary Alice Kirby. Mary Alice Kirby passed away on the 28th of November and her wake is being held this Friday at McKinnon's and then the funeral will be on Saturday. Mary Alice Kirby, as you know, was the wife of Senator Kirby. She was a gracious, gentle, brilliant woman of great faith. She worked on our cultural council for a while. She was really active at Holy Ghost. She was also the first, you can read this in her obituary, but she was also the first woman trustee at Massasoia Community College back in 1974. What she also was, was one of the pioneers of continental cable. She learned how to produce TV shows and film them by Stephen Roy. And actually, I am, right after this meeting, I'm going to go to the studio because they were able to digitize a copy of an old VHS that I had of about a half an hour little play that she wrote called Holiday Happenings that she used to put out at Christmas time. She filmed it in either August or July and she had to fill her yard with cotton or something like that to look like snow. And also keep cars from going down Harvard Street because she was, because the little show took place before cars drove down Harvard Street, I think. But I'm really excited about getting that DVD and I just hope that you please keep her in your thoughts and in your prayers. She was a terrific woman. This meeting is being recorded and televised by a local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'd like a motion to approve bill and, we did accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, public forum? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in public forum about something? Yes, Mr. Haynes. You can go to the podium. He'll be talking on something that's not on the agenda and if we need to discuss it further, we'll discuss it at subsequent meetings.
My name is Alfred Haynes. I live at 453 Beulah Street, Whitman. I'm a senior citizen, 71. I've been retired for six years. I'm a member of the Holy Ghost Church. I have a couple of suggestions I'd like to make. One of them on about the loan that you're going to have for 30 years. I'm a member of the seniors center. I go there all the time. I walk through Whitman. A lot of you probably see me around. A lot of the seniors are very upset about having to pay in all this extra money. I'm upset about it also. However, I'd like to see maybe you can change things around here. As far as the payment is concerned, you have a 30-year loan. I know you're going to save $14 billion by doing it, the high payment first, low payment in 30 years. If you could switch that around and make the low payment first and the high payment in 30 years. House value is going to go up over that 30-year period. Income's going to go up over that 30-year period. That'll mellow out and the seniors won't get hurt as much. It'll probably drop the cost to them by about $500 and it'll make it easy on them. If this is going to go through, it'll make it easier on them to be able to pay it. We all want it. I live by myself. I own my house on Beulah Street. I've been here since, my parents have been, my family's been here since '72. I've been a homeowner for the last 22 years. So, I live by myself. I'm a senior citizen, like I said, I'm on a fixed income and this is going to kind of tip me over the board. I'm just kind of on borderline as far as maybe getting some help for heat or something like that. And this is going to take a lot of money. A lot of seniors don't have any extra money. A lot of them don't have $400 for an emergency and this is going to blow them off. If you could make it easier by doing that, changing that loan around and maybe bring it down, you know, have the low payment now, the seniors will all be dead. You won't be, you know, that won't be an issue for them. Most of us are going to die before then anyway. That would be a big help to the seniors. So that was one suggestion I had. My other suggestion is, as far as elections are considered, I've done a little bit of investigating over since the vote. I did vote no against the school and one of my issues is, I went to the town meeting, we had the meeting, and then five days later you had the vote. Not enough time. I know that you did notify a lot of the voters by sign and I have a whole list of the way you did it, but you didn't send anything out to the voters. A lot of people don't go to the town meetings. That's one of the things I found out in the last five years. No one goes to the town meetings. Why can't we have, change the system that we have as far as voting, have mail voting? Mail voting seems to be the new way to vote. During this past election, we saw that people tried to stop people from voting and mail voting was the way. More people got out there and voted because they didn't have anyone to interfere with them at the polls or there was a privacy issue and they got more votes. I suggest that we do that the same way. Town meetings, they're archaic. There's the same type of system you had, the bylaws to the last 100 years. Why can't we change the bylaws and have voting when we only have one town meeting a year? All those issues, you could put that on a ballot and when you send out the tax payment to everyone, the first tax payment for this year, we could just change things around so that you have your meetings done. And you could have that on a ballot that people could vote as they're going to pay, when they get their tax bill, they get the vote for all the issues for the town for any meeting you have and vote on it and send it in. That way you get the whole population of people. As you know, only 2,000 people showed up for the election. We have, according to the clerk's office, I think it's 11,300 votes. So 9,300 people didn't vote. Things have changed. People work two jobs. It's not like 30 or 40 years ago where one of the parents was home doing the cooking, making supper. Now everybody works two jobs, the wife, the husband, and they, you know, traffic is bad, they don't get home, we have the meeting at 6 o'clock and no one shows up for it. We don't have a lot of people showing up for the town meetings. So why don't we change it? And all the issues, put on a ballot and mail, have mail voting. It would make it easier on the town, it would cut expenses, it'll make it easy for everybody who wants to, I'm sure all these people wanted to vote and in between the town meeting, they didn't get, they had the regular thing, but no one got mailed anything. No one got any notice. You had five days away. Now, when they did, originally did the VFW Department of Public Works vote for the new building, they had the town meeting and they voted on it. The town meeting was like, I think it was the first and then 22 days later, they had plenty of time. They only had five days and plus, a lot of people didn't know about the vote. So that's, those are a couple of the recommendations I'd like to make to the financial committee and to the town about changing the way we do our system. This is a modern time now. Things are different than they used to be. Let's make it easier so everybody can vote. If we send a mail out, we could have had way more people voting and everyone can vote on every issue that we have. They get it at home, they mail, check it off, they bring it in when they're going to pay their taxes or mail it in with their taxes and we resolve issues like that.
Thank you very much, Al.
Just wanted to say that. Thank you for all your concerns. Hope everything works out well. Have a good day.
Now it's time for, it's past time, 20 minutes past time, for a meeting with the, joint meeting with the finance committee requested by the finance committee. And I'm happy to see Vice Chair of the Finance Committee here who is also still a member of the Whitman-Hanson Middle School, Whitman Middle School Building Committee. And we don't have to have a vote tonight to solidify that. Good to see you in both roles. Rich?
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the finance committee always looks forward to a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Just for an update a little bit, since we last met jointly, we do have a new member, Mike Warner, wanted to introduce. We also have an update on Justin, I mean, Lucas.
Arizona, a couple of years ago.
Yeah. No, Lucas is, his studies now conflict with our meeting date and times for the budget season, so he's going to have to step down. So I just wanted to announce there's a vacancy on finance committee, so. So just really quickly, and I know now we're a little strapped on time, but the, just for the benefit of Mike and maybe some newer people, the reason why we like to meet jointly with the Board of Selectmen is kind of laid out the DLS information on annual budget processes and, and I just want to read a little bit from it. It says, "The annual budget is a community's primary policy statement and establishes the priorities of government." So moving, the major milestones in the process often include these components. And I'll only read the first couple because that's where we are in the process right now. So, "A joint meeting of the Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee to review revenue projections and reach consensus on overall expenditure levels, use of reserves, and allocation of resources generally. Distribution of budget guidelines to department managers so they can begin to prepare their appropriation requests." So, those things are underway. I think Mary Beth did a great job with the initial budget mailing. She laid out a very clear request for each budget manager to submit their budgets and they all did timely and the budgets have been forwarded to the full committee. The benefit, I think, the benefit from this process, the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the process as it's laid out here with the DLS, has helped us, I think, better prepare for town meeting. So, we've already met with police, the veteran services, fire, and the treasure collector and following our meeting here tonight, we're going to be meeting with the building department and the assessor.
Veteran services.
Yeah, and we met with veteran services as well. Thank you, Mike. So, again, we look forward to any suggestions that we can collectively come up with as we start the budget year. So I'm certainly open to questions, comments, anything that you want to present.
Thanks, Rick. I think Mary Beth would like to say something and Sean would like to add something to the conversation too.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. So at last year's annual town meeting, we mentioned that we would begin the budget process earlier this fiscal year and work with all stakeholders to finalize the town's budget sooner than has been done in the past. This fiscal year, we have taken the following steps to prepare the fiscal 25 budget for the town. In July, I met with the Assistant Town Administrator Kathy Keefe, the Town Administrator of Hanson, Lisa Green, the FinCom Chairman Rick Anderson, and the Superintendent of Schools Jeff Simonak to discuss the preliminary budget timeline and the town's 5% budget increase over last year's Whitman-Hanson Regional School District's appropriation. In October, I sent out budget requests to all departments to submit their budgets using a 2.5% increase for salary increases and to level fund their expenses. In November, I began to meet with individual department heads to discuss their budget submissions and this process will continue for the next couple of months. The finance committee, as Rick stated, is also meeting with department heads to review their individual budgets. I also met again with the Hanson Town Administrator Lisa Green and Superintendent Jeff Simonak in November to continue the discussion of what the two towns, Whitman and Hanson, state they can support for an increase to the district. In December, I worked with the assessor, the treasurer, collector, and the accountant to prepare information for the fiscal 25 budget, Article II. I also drafted a preliminary fiscal 25 budget based on the original directive of using a 2.5% increase for salaries and level funding for expenses. This draft budget includes some known increases and some assumptions as it is still early in the budget process and not all budget amounts are known yet. This budget does not reflect departmental requests for amounts above level funding for expenses and it does not reflect level service amounts. This budget is very fluid and is a work in progress. It is simply a preliminary budget snapshot of what we know as of today. And I think that Sean will outline where we are.
Can we turn this on?
Sure. Well, has it? Oh, and I have some handouts here, so.
As Mary Beth's handing those, some of the backup documents out, I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Karen Clancy and Ken Laitel and Mary Beth Cotter and Kathy Keeford. They're doing a lot of the legwork on this. We want to get better at financial forecasting, both with revenues and expenditures, and it's meetings like this that I think are really a huge step in that direction. And you guys are the finance committee, so I think you would appreciate some backup, so I'm hoping you'll be happy with what we've given you tonight. We don't have time to get in the weeds on some of the documents that are being passed out, but transparency and financial forecasting are tightly connected and it's, really, it's a major, I think, priority for us to be more and more transparent and more and more proactive. With that, this shouldn't take very long. So the first thing we did was we looked at revenue and our financial, one of our financial management policies specifically states that we're going to be conservative about our revenue projections. Specifically, it lists an 85%, says, "Estimates for local receipts will generally not exceed 85% of the prior year's actual collection without evidence that higher revenues are achievable." So, we actually, on our revenue projections, we use 90%, just so you're aware of that and you'll see that in the handouts, with the exception of trash. Trash was the only one that when we looked at more carefully, it seemed like we raised rates and it feel like we have enough evidence and knowledge of what's going on that we can be a bit higher with specifically what we collect for trash. Excise tax is one area in particular, revenue, that we are looking at closely. Just so everybody's aware, the first commitment for excise tax is collected in January. So that first excise tax bill that goes out is sent out to everybody in town who has a car. And that's where we get the most information about our excise taxes. All the future commitments that are sent out throughout the budget year are then really just capturing people who either purchased a new car or, or if they trade cars or something. It's really that first commitment that is very valuable for us to get a trend for where we're going to be with our excise. So, we were conservative about our excise taxes, but we're somewhat hopeful that we'll see in January, but obviously concerned about interest rates. Okay, so just a quick calculation on how we get our revenue. If we take the current year's levy, just the $30,900,000 number, we had 2.5%. That's a little over $700,000. And then our projection for new growth is $450,000. So we feel like we have that number kind of dialed in, but trying to be a little bit conservative with the new growth. This year's new growth actually came in about $600,000, mostly because of some personal property. But the number that we're using is $450,000 for new growth. Therefore, the projected levy would be just over $32 million and then we add in our local receipts at about $10 million, which brings the total for revenue at about $42 million. The key here is that this year's revenue over last year's revenue on this projection is $1.1 million over. So we have about $1.1 million in new revenue that we're projecting. We go to the expenditure side, here's the, here's the quick assumptions that we're using on Article II. So, we're looking at level funded expenses, salary projections increased by 2.5% with the exception of the things that are contractual. And these guys did a lot of work to put specifically in there, the contractual changes, steps and lanes, which is really a lot of detail-oriented work, but I think we benefited from doing that earlier in the budget season. And then you can see the police and fire, all of, all the services. We don't have those numbers specifically yet, but we came up with 3.5 just as a ballpark. We think we'll be close to that. And then Plymouth County retirement increase at 9.21%, Whitman-Hanson Regional School at 5%, medical insurance at a little over $100,000, and then South Shore-Bottick because of an additional 14 students, we put in at 10%. So just for mental reference, just those ones that I calculated, the 270, the 886, the 121, and the 160, if you add that up, that's about $1.4 million, just those four. So if we go back to the revenue side, increase over last year was $1.1 million and now expected expenditures, that's at 1.4, just those four, to give you some perspective on where we're at with our projection that way. And obviously to reiterate, these, some of these figures will need to increase to cover the real costs of, you know, I kind of like some of the questions that you guys were asking, like new laws or change in population. You know, you're asking all those questions and it's really helpful to get that information from department heads. Okay, so, just lastly, so if we're looking at our total revenue projection and our total expenditure projection right now as we sit here, and again, this is just a projection, it's just to give us some sort of gauge, we're at a deficit of $273,000.
And that's it?
Question on the revenue page, Sean. Where does the number 1,143,299 come from? Like what do you subtract?
That was just last year's total revenue. Oh, sorry. I think the bottom star is what you're saying. That was just last year's revenue, or this year's projected, the 42,195 minus last year's what we, what we did, you know, current. Makes sense? So we just subtracted the projected from what was last year's.
So where is last year's? It's not on that page. It's on the next page?
It is on the bottom of the Article II.
I appreciate this information.
It's also on the bottom of the revenue summary here.
Okay. Thank you. Got it.
Shall I recognize Rosemary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you can certainly recognize anybody that passes.
Anybody I want. Yeah, okay.
It's all up to you. This is your meeting today.
Of course, we can't get into everything here with the backup. Rosemary?
This is an overview of if there's any of the information that, the backup, like what is the investment property? Where are the rentals? What are they? Just to look at those. If that could be emailed, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get better and better at forecasting and those sorts of things. So if there's specific information that you need in like the details of the backup that we're providing here, definitely reach out because we want to.
I think it's the finance committee. Anything that you're using, you should probably have that accessible. So whatever was used, I'd be happy to review. Must have it. Thank you.
So I'd just like to add, Mr. Chairman, that this information is more comprehensive than anything we've ever had and I'm very appreciative to having the information. Having this format, I think, gets us off to a really good start. As you might be aware, some of the budgets that we've already been receiving don't fall into the guidelines that you have established here, which is typical, right, for this time of year? But again, I think it's good that we're here together to talk about where we need to end up at an earlier time than we have in the past. Because as Mary Beth mentioned, our last budget season, it was absolutely ridiculous at the end. I think nobody wouldn't agree with that. So, just to follow up, there were the initial meeting with the district and there was a follow-up meeting. Mary Beth, is there anything that came out of that meeting that maybe you want to share?
It was just the three of us, you know, Lisa, myself, and Jeff, and we just, you know, explained, you know, that it's so important that we do come to a balanced budget, you know, for both sides. We have that vote. We don't want to be where we were last year and the district doesn't either. You know, we want to get to where we need to be, to a balanced budget for the town. So I am hopeful. I mean, I can't say, you know, they have a process to go through and the school committee and, you know, I'm sure, but 5% as you can see is, we're negative even with that at level funding. And level funding isn't realistic because of utilities increases, you know, and that's not even any of the other needs that the departments have. So I'm really, I feel 5% would be the absolute max that we could do, but we have a long way to go and this is changing every minute. Tomorrow, there'll be another number that we enter in here and as we meet with departments, we'll find out needs that we have to address. But as far as the meeting that I had with Jeff Simonak, I came away, I think that they know that we were in a very tight spot last year and that, and I assumed that we would be in a tight spot again this year and I can see that we are. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to come in where we need to be.
Excellent. Well, not only the numbers tell the tale, but there's a timeline. I mean, especially for members of the finance committee who, you know, who are looking at this and meeting with the budget managers throughout the year, only to have the decision-making and the recommendation compressed into an, you know, an unworkable timeline. So I'm glad that these meetings are taking place sooner than later. I think we should all be benefit from that, I believe, so. Does anybody else have anything they want to bring up? I just had one other thing we talked a little bit about with the fire chief was the, one of his capital items. And I don't think this is too early to talk about capital because it's something that is an important part of our budget, but turnout gear, something that the firefighters need to have updated and modern equipment to keep them safe. If you recall back when we had the Budget Override Evaluation Committee, we talked a little bit about the consultant giving us some suggestions on establishing the ambulance account. And in his suggestion, he actually suggested that not only are we saving for an ambulance every three years, but we're also putting money aside for turnout gear, specifically mentioned turnout gear in his recommendation. I think we didn't vote on that. I think if you recall, the Budget Override Evaluation Committee recommended that we establish the ambulance account, but didn't include in the recommendation the turnout gear. So I think in the wake of utilizing ARPA funds for the purchase of the most recent ambulance, I think now there's an adequate amount of money in the ambulance account to address that need for the turnout gear. So just an example of how I think working together with the Board of Selectmen, where you guys policymakers and, you know, looking for ways that we can close this budget gap, I think, you know, any suggestion I think is going to be helpful.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
And the only other question I have really builds on issues that were brought up at the town meeting where money was found, I don't mean found, but not expended. The DPW had a number of articles that came in under budget and that was a huge help to get the DPW budget funded. And I know, Mary Beth, I believe you said you were going to be looking at all of the articles from previous years that should be closed out and that may be a source of revenue, both from the towns' articles, but also the schools' articles. What they haven't spent, I think John Stanbrook sent a significant amount of money back to the town after closing out the school articles. Is that a process that's underway too, to identify, is there another million or $2 million not spent?
So I did ask the accountant to, rather than printing a 200, 300-page report, I asked her if she could put into Excel all of the information for all articles. She did give me, Karen did put together something for me that I want to sit with her and narrow down because there's special revenue articles and then the regular articles and so I want to really condense that. But there are several articles, and I'm not saying several articles that are ready to be closed out, but there are several articles with balances for projects that have not yet been started or have been completed. Some of them aren't that old, some of them a little older. I believe that the former accountant, Ken Laitel, used to go through the articles, is that correct, Ken? Periodically and work to close those articles out. So yes, I do have a list in an Excel form that Karen and I are going to go over and reduce to a table that is more manageable. This is just a big.
Don't doubt it.
It's spreadsheet and it has, you know, negatives and positives and so I want to really get it down. And yes, we will be reviewing those, although I don't know. to really get it down, and yes, we will be reviewing those, although I don't know if we closed out those articles, well, I guess if we transferred, but otherwise, if we closed out, it would be for the following year.
Okay.
For the following year's free cash.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so you get to go to your other meeting.
Thank you very much for allowing us the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we get Article Two, the one in four man, so like that? That's the one I like to use instead of the individual one.
I actually didn't follow Ken's presentation last week because I have too many commercials in these places to look.
Of course, I must see it too, it's, it's great. Are you in the whole two hundred and seventy? Projections are a little light.
Good night.
Hey, why'd you show up?
He snuck in. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I hope you had a nice Thanksgiving.
Oh, it was wonderful. I got a ten month old green niece. I said it's humble.
Guess we're ready to carry on, right?
Yes.
Before we get into doing business, I, I do have a little bit of a chairman's report to, to share with you. I've been doing a lot of thinking over the last couple of weeks about all the changes that have happened over the last couple of weeks, the special town meeting, the election, et cetera, and for myself, I wanted to try to put those things into perspective, like to try to put recent and future events into some kind of perspective, and we just started getting into future events just now. For as long as I can recall, the goal of the Board of Selectmen and the town administration has been consistently to keep taxes as low as possible without losing quality of service. I don't know how many times I've heard Dan Salbucci say that, we're going to keep taxes as low as possible, but we don't want to lose anybody either. Our two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Strategy Plan Survey of Values that we took revealed the obvious, that we value our public schools, our fire and police services, and public works. Indeed, when asked for which services you would support an override for, sixty-nine percent of those surveyed said schools, fifty-six and, fifty-six percent said fire and police, and forty-seven percent said public works. This townwide citizen support has been obvious for years, even without overrides, but at times with debt expenditures, the debt exclusions. If we look at last number of years, well, we can go back to nineteen seventy-seven and look at the establishment of the Whitman Counseling Center. Whitman Counseling Center was established, why? Because kids were having problems. And town meeting voted to give a modest amount of money to the Whitman Counseling Center every year, up until a couple of years ago, when it started giving them to the Whitman Hansen Will, which, and they're dealing with the same, same kinds of problems. Our citizens have been strong in trying to help people out. It was the citizens initiated and maintained expenditure each year for non-mandated busing. Why? That didn't, that didn't come from the schools, that didn't come from the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee, came from the citizens. Why? Because we don't have sidewalks, and we wanted our kids to be safe going to school. And we don't have as many sidewalks as we should have, let's put it that way, and that was because of the citizens of the town, directly. We built a new regional high school, we did renovations to the, to some of the Whitman Elementary Schools, we did renovate, we did, built a new police station, renovations to Town Hall Fire Station, new libraries been built, four firemen were, were ratted a few years ago, and that was, that was done by an override. And also, we voted at a town meeting to ease Hanson's adoption of the statutory method for school assessments. Remember, it was one of our citizens of Whitman, Chris George, and one of our selectmen at the time, Randy Lamartina, who discovered that there was a way that we were supposed to be assessed that wasn't really happening for a number of years. It was going to, and so that the, the school committee voted to do it, or they, they voted not to keep the system that they had, it's a different, different thing. We thought that, we thought that Hanson maybe needed a year to get into that, so we found some money for them to do that. And now, which will add much strain to be sure, debt exclusions for a new Whitman Middle School and a long-needed DPW building, as well as future building construction at SSVT, and that's what we're going to be facing. We've done, we, we've gotten through all of that that I've just talked about, not easy sometimes, but we got through it. I think this town has the spirit to get through it. We've always supported schools and public services, and will continue to do so, no matter how difficult, as we have in the past. Maybe we, maybe we'll eventually need an operational override for the schools, difficult to imagine while dealing with the strain of debt exclusions, but there are some of us who have talked about the possibility of the, the need for an operational override for the schools for a long time, sometime that may, might have to happen. I know one of the, one of my, one of my pet peeves over the years has been the fact that the, the kids in Whitman had to join a lottery to, to take a foreign language. They, they had to enter a lottery, whereas the kids in Hanson got taught foreign languages. Now, I don't know why that, why that happened, but it, it did, and it wasn't fair. Eventually, the schools' way of dealing with that was to give foreign languages to nobody, so that it wouldn't be unfair, but that's not the answer either. The answer, the answer is that we do care, we do care about our schools, and so maybe we're going to have to show it somehow in a more concrete way, but that's down the road. Actually, when we speak of the debt exclusions, I, thank God that the special town meeting took Mary Beth's advice on how to handle the debt exclusions, and with all, with all due respect to Mr. Haynes, and he, he was certainly asking us some sincere questions and some of the ones we had to deal with. However, the level principle is the way to go, and it is, it is saving the town fourteen million dollars. I'm confident that we will, and I trust that we will again, find a way to keep our taxes down. Despite the growth in activity that I just outlined, our taxes have stayed relatively low, even today. Of the, of our five contiguous, contiguous towns, the towns that are right around us, four of the five have higher tax rates than ours, according to DOR-FY twenty-three figures. Brockton is the only exception, and that's understandable. In our Metro South community, thirteen of the twenty towns and cities in the Metro South, thirteen of them have higher tax rates than we do. And in Plymouth County, eleven out of twenty-six are higher than we are, so we're sort of in the middle there, but Plymouth County, remember, takes into account the Gold Coast with Ducksbury and Situate and Hingham and Cohasset and places like that. We have kept our, we have kept our taxes low for a long time, and managed to serve people as well as we can. I was proud to be from Whitman when the results of our special election were announced, and we had a new DPW and a Whitman Middle School building to look forward to. The times ahead will be difficult. This was a good start tonight, though, with the forecast, but I'm sure we can handle them as we have before, we've handled them before, and I believe that we can handle, we can handle them again. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
New business, renew the following licenses for calendar year twenty twenty-four, subject to payment of license fees, not resounding, not, no outstanding tax issues, the submittal of all required renewal documents and the approvals were acquired of the Building and Fire Departments. I am not going to read every single one of these, these things, but I'll get, I'll read the categories, the all alcohol club, the all alcohol packaged goods store, the amusement life entertainment licenses, automatic amusement device, class-two auto dealers, common Wittlers, common Wittlers all alcohol, common Wittlers wine and malt, congregate housing, farmer series pouring permit, general on-premises wine and malt, public entertainment on Sunday, rooming house, wine and malt package goods stores. I have a motion to accept those licenses.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And if you haven't signed them already, it'd be a good thing to do. We have some, I, we have some licenses here to sign, but there's a bulk of them somewhere, right?
Yes, I'm sure Lori has those, they were over on the table, but Lori has those.
Okay. That brings us down to... Consider the extending the closing time for club and common Wittler liquor licenses holders to two AM on Monday, January first, twenty twenty-four, for New Year's Eve celebrations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to pass over the vote to appoint Kathy Otten at the position as a member of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee, because that's been taken care of already. And now, the last item under new business is called the Whitman Freedom Team. So, Mr. Evans? Why don't you come up here, Tom?
Can I sit with him?
Sure, go ahead.
You're here with him.
He used to be my neighbor, no longer though. Good evening, Dr. Kowalski, board, our town administrator.
It's nice to be here. I want to preface everything before I start with, this is something that is going to take a while to germinate and to become official, but tonight is the first opportunity I think I've had of making it public unofficially, and take the courtesy of presenting it to you first. I've spoken to other people, and I'll get into that in a little bit. You may have received something, I hope that I have printed out, I, I have amended a little bit about the hotline, and I'll, I'll get to that in a moment, all right? Tonight, I'm here to discuss the formation of the Whitman Freedom Team, which I'll refer to sometime as WFT. It is something I've been working on since last March after watching a TED Talk on NADAC, it was on YouTube. The presenter was Jamil Adams, who not only was passionate about the Freedom Team, but he was also willing to assist folks in forming a team in their own community. It is Jamil's passion for others that started me to think about a Whitman's, a Whitman Freedom Team. That's why I'm here tonight, because of my friend, Jamil Adams. I'll take a few minutes to give you a snapshot of what I think the Whitman Freedom Team will look like, and what we're committed to, to forming. My hope is that those who may be interested in helping make the WFT a reality will give me a call when we go from, and then we'll go from there. I have provided you with some information which I hope helps you conceptualize what a Freedom Team is. First, let me tell you what it's not. It's not a political, it's not political, and it's not partisan, and it's not a law enforcement agency. What it is, the WFT is made up of Whitman volunteers and is based on ten, the ten-point communal engagement model that roots pillars of the community and people central in the community as a team dedicated to love, inclusion, and trust. It might sound corny, but that's what we're about. Our mission, and I think we're going to have a motto, I am not the only person who's going to be making decisions, but I'm suggesting a motto, find a way in memory of J. P. Dryer, a young man who had so much to give to our community, and so that's, we're going to do it. The mission of the Whitman Freedom Team is to preserve, preserve freedom through the community, through unity in the community. Its members meet monthly, usually by Zoom, to explore ways of offering dialogue and to support individuals and the entire community with the goal of promoting love, inclusion, and trust, and moving beyond tolerance to embracing, celebrating, and share our communities' diversity. We're beginning to change, and we need to change. We can be different, but we can also work together. A note, I was advised when, by the seven other Freedom Teams which are in the, this eastern part of Massachusetts, NADAC, Hingham, Franklin, Hopkinton, Situate, several others, that rather than invent a wheel, adopt some of those paraphrasing or, or missions and, and goals and so forth. What I hope to do is, once we form officially, the members will decide what the wording should be, but this is where we're starting. The mission of the Freedom Team, as I said, is to, to preserve those things. The first Freedom Team was formed in two thousand sixteen in NADAC through the inspiration of Jamil Adams. Mr. Adams has been very supportive and helping me with the task of forming the Whitman Freedom Team. Additionally, the police chiefs from Franklin, Mass. and NADAC, Mass. have spoken of the value of their Freedom Team and the positive impact the team has had on their own communities. They provided suggestions which has aided me in my efforts to establish a team in Whitman. The Freedom Team assists in helping our community heal when needed, and will join the network of the Freedom Teams, of which Whitman will be number eight. May I ask, what happens when there's a report or there's something that comes to our attention? What happens once a report is brought to the attention of the Freedom Team? The Freedom Team will offer a safe, private, and respectful space to discuss incidents using transformative justice model, and for those who have the paper in front of them, that is a framework for responding to violence, abuse, and harm, and it basically says, we respond to violence without creating more violence. In other words, we are trying to be healing, having parties come together, be educated, and de-escalate situations. The Freedom Team stands for inclusion and provides the support and opportunities for reconciliation to people who have experienced threats, harassments, or violence related to race, color, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, ethnicity, nationality, religion, disability, or class, and that's taken directly from the Situate's wording. To repeat, the Freedom Team is a voluntary and nonpartisan organization. It exists to listen and facilitate discussions for individuals and groups, encouraging, encouraging people to be upstanders, not bystanders, in interrupting racism, bigotry, and prejudice wherever it's encountered, preserving freedom through unity, and a commitment to gaining new understanding in the community, that was adopted from the NADA. They suggest that we have that communal team, and there are basically ten people who are ten positions that, that have been recommended. The key is the Chief of Police, because the Chief of Police will be the person who, if there is something that is not lawful or has broken law, we will defer to immediately, that's not our role. But he, and I've spoken to Chief Hannah, and I appreciate his help, he has advised me that I was going to have a particular hotline number. I have to work on that because it cannot be part of the Police Department, because of town liability and so forth, and I want to thank Mary Beth too, for her advice and her support in the conversation I've had, whatever. Also, super genative schools, we, we, we believe that in most communities, a lot of the complaints that come out of, or come to the attention of Freedom Teams is through schools, whether it be racism or anti-Semitic things, disagreements among groups, cores, so forth. And the super genative schools at Whitman Hansen has, again, offered us support, he has allowed Nicole Simas, I don't know if you know her, she's a D E I person, that's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Person up at the high school, to speak with students, and I, I have spoken with some students already who are interested in getting involved and involving some of the kids. I believe there are some of the people who are going to be affected, particularly people who come no- who come new into the town, new into the school, and maybe might encounter some of these things. So we have chief of police, superintendent of schools, students, parents. Again, I've spoken to a lot of people, a lawyer, clergy, local political representatives. I've spoken to, I think, at least alluded to three of you on the committee. And Carl, you were the first one I spoke to, and the two other gentlemen. We need a social media expert, I think I have one, a clinician who is trained in trauma and informed with multicultural lenses, so we don't just see one color or we see one perspective. And a restorative transformation justice facilitator. And that person, we have somebody in mind. We hope that more people who learn about this will respond to it, ask questions about it, and come forward. In closing tonight, in closing, tonight is just the beginning. There's still much more to do before the Whitman Freedom Team becomes a reality, but rest assured, it will happen. One of the things we're involved in right now is developing a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3), and that will allow us to become independent, we have nothing to do with the town, but become independent, raise some money to help fund some of the things we hope to do, whether it be discussions or parental programs, student programs, some educational things, and that's what we're trying to do with that. We still need to get folks to join. Spoken to some folks who are interested in the WFT. We need to establish a website, email, and a hotline phone number. Hopefully, tonight, we take our first step in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Any questions?
I was just going to say, does anyone have?
Oh, sorry.
Well, I have a question. How many people do you think is the ideal number of people to be in this group?
Well, that's a good question. There could be as many as there want to be.
Right.
What would happen if there was a situation where we had to do some intervention? Only two or three people would be selected from that part. If it has something to do with something that's culture and somebody in our group has that expertise, that's what we would do. If it's somebody else with school-related, somebody with a school background or related to that, would get onto that group. If it's something that is questionable, it goes to the police, and they tell us whether it's legal or not. We don't do anything without confirming with the chief of police. And we do have a lawyer, too, which will help us to keep us within guidelines. We are not the end-all and be-all, but I think there's a dialogue that should happen. I just saw, again, on TV, a kid being beaten to death because of his heritage, not beaten to death, but almost to death. Five other students kicked and pummeled this kid. For what reason? There was no reason other than that. It hasn't happened here, and I don't want it to happen here, but I think the more we discuss things and the more that we talk about how our country is moving towards being as good as we can be, we can help with that. So.
Thanks.
I just feel supported.
Is there an average number of people that are in the other seven?
I can't tell you that. I do know that there are sometimes 15, I did a Zoom meeting with them, there were about 25 people, but they were from seven different Freedom Teams.
Okay.
But yeah, it's concentrated, and most of the things are things that they talk about. If there's no crisis, if there's no intervention needed, they think about how can we help the community, what can we do, you know, positive kinds of things, to bring people together.
Anyone else have any questions? Sean?
Well, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's a positive initiative, and it's a good thing. And this is very close to the work that I do, and I'm intrigued by it. I do have to say, when I first read about this, and listen, I do have some caution about potentially dealing with someone in crisis, you know, like a relatively informal organization that might welcome people who have been through a traumatic situation or that kind of thing, does, it just makes me pause. But the pro-social stuff, like you were saying, bringing people together and celebrating and whatnot, that to me feels like, kind of like Whitman Will. They talk about a lot of really difficult concepts, but they do it in a proactive way, and they do a lot of hands-on cool activities, and kids learn a lot, and it's preventative. And I think that work is, can really, can really take off and get a lot of traction. The work of welcoming people in who have been through a traumatic situation is really complex, and I think it's good to hear some of those professionals that you listed, but I would like to lean on a really experienced team that's going to, if they're going to do interventions, they would have to be very careful because that's very serious work.
Point well taken, Sean, and is one of the things to know, no matter what role you have in any kind of organization, know your limits and know where your expertise does not lie or ends. I'll give you an example of how this is, how the Freedom Team was used this summer. Jamil is a DEI teacher down in the town of Sitewatt. He lives in Franklin, but he lives in Sitewatt. And when they named him as in that position, there were all kinds of racial kind of messages in the sand that they made. What happened is that the group valley behind him supported him, the community seeing this, condemned that, and supported him, you know, by talking to him, by having a vigil, just showing that there's no need for that and that the community is not represented by one or two people or any other, any group, yeah. One of the reasons why Steve's here is because one of the things that people think, oh, it's going to be political, it's going to be Democrat versus Republican, liberal versus conservative, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. He and I are on the opposite ends of the spectrum. I'm on the right side, and he's on the wrong side, but that's all right. No, he's a very dear friend of mine, he's very fair, and that's what I want. I don't want people to agree with me. I want people to tell me what there is, what the problem is, define it, and then go to reconciliation. It's funny you mention that, because when I used to go to your meetings in the morning at your school, you did that all the time. He gave up the chairmanship to the students who ran their meetings, who were accountable. It's a wonderful model, and I hope to be the same, quite frankly, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to see Steve there, too. I just said to somebody today that my attitude about finance committees changed when Steve became the chair of the finance committee, seriously.
I know.
And it's had its ups and downs, but it's pretty much stayed on the Steve voice level, I think. And you, Tom, absolutely best principal I have ever...
You don't know any of us.
I know a few. I know a few. I know a few people who work in education, and you did a remarkable job, and to have you as the headpin on this will work out perfectly.
We'll work hard for you.
I'm looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, same here. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Steve.
You're safe.
Old business, update on the Auburn Street traffic study.
I think maybe Tom Evans should be required reading forward here, presentation. So, the traffic study was done between November 7 and the 8th from Auburn Street, west of Captain Allen Way, Auburn Street, west of Hog Memorial, Auburn Street, east of Bedford Street, and then again, Auburn Street, east of Harvard Street. We got a summary and a 56-page survey, which I can't interpret the whole thing, but the highlights were that from previous traffic studies they've done in 2004, 2008, and 2009 in these same areas, the speed really hasn't changed significantly, with the exception of between Route 18, Bedford Street, and Harvard Street, and that went up from 38 to 45 miles an hour on average. We have a call into them to try and interpret the data, to see what that means as far as the speed limits are concerned in that area, whether they should be lowered or what this data presents to us. And I can't decipher all those pages necessarily without a little assistance.
So what can we tell the people that are looking for some improvements?
We're still working on it, and once we hear back and we get a more, better interpretation of the data that was presented.
Okay, will you be able to give a full report to one of our meetings with...
Yes, coming up.
Recommendations?
Right. That's the update for now. Stay tuned.
Well, it's concerning. It's concerning, and that's sort of like the tip of the iceberg, and we need someone like you to be able to look at all the information and help us out. Do you have anything to add, Mary Beth?
No, I reviewed the summary as well, and so that is my question, you know, what would we recommend, if anything? It doesn't look like there were a lot of drastic changes from the previous studies that were done, so I really...
We're going to have to dig a little deeper into the other 56 pages. This is really what the answer is.
It was quite a comprehensive, I started printing it, like, oh my goodness, it's a lot of information there.
Okay, and so we'll get a fuller report at a later meeting?
Correct.
That we can pass on to the citizens that ask the questions?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Bob Kimball, 877 Auburnville Way. I believe I was one of the people that asked to have this study done. A little disappointed that we didn't get notified that it was going to be on the agenda this evening, but that being said, thank you for doing the study. We still have a lot of concerns about traffic. One of the things I've reached out a couple times and haven't had answers to is trying to get some signs on the corner to have people slow down. You know, one morning I went out and I pulled out of Auburnville Way, got up to speed as fast as I could, and somebody doing 70 miles an hour passed me. So it is a concern up there. Looking for the final report. I hope that we can at least reduce the speed on Auburn Street, especially around the corner. If we can, if the speed limit has to be 40 miles an hour up near Hog Memorial, maybe we can put an electronic sign or something saying curve, because when we do come out of Auburnville Way, we are elderly people, and you look one way, you look the other way, you look back, and then you start to go, and here comes a car around the corner that we can't see. So I appreciate what's being done, but there's still a lot of work to do, and looking forward to the final report, and hopefully you can reduce the speed limits. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That exhausts our agenda, I think, doesn't it?
I just have one question. Under the town administrator, I just want to mention that we do, on December 14, have Thomas Hickey, that's okay, from Seltzer Votech coming here to this room on December 14 at 7:00 p.m. It will be in the selectmen's meeting room, and that's for the Seltzer Votech Forum to discuss the building project that they are looking at for a new school. So that's very important. And just one other item, Mr. Chairman, when you went through the list, I wasn't sure that I heard Class 1 Auto Dealer, I heard Class 2 Auto Dealer.
Oh.
But if it's just everything that's on the agenda for all 15, 13, 15 items?
I see Class 2. Oh, you know what? I didn't say Class 1 Auto Dealer.
I don't think you did, okay. So I just wanted to make sure.
Down at the bottom of the page, and I just...
That that's all.
Okay. Do we need to vote it again?
We signed it, right?
Yeah, why don't we?
We can vote it again.
Okay, let's vote it again.
Sorry.
Just so we don't screw up. Class 1 Auto Dealer, is there a motion?
Move that we approve those licenses as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.